Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the August 16th, 2016 Vista Planning Committee meeting. Commissioner Carroll, will you lead us in the pledge?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and justness for all.
Thank you. Ms. Turley, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Carroll.
Here.
Chairman Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
Commissioner Jackal.
Here.
Commissioner Rosler is excused, and Commissioner Looney.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, before you are the minutes from the August 2nd, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any changes? If none, can we get a motion, please? Commissioner Carroll.
Thank you, Chairman. Let's see. I did have one comment on the summary notes, and that was where it was questioned whether 54 units were necessary. I think that was tied to, in regards to the feasibility of the project. I just thought maybe we should... It wasn't... It kind of looks like just a blank open-ended question when I think it was more intended to be in regards to if any 54 units were necessary for feasibility. And except for that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
I would second that motion.
Oh, good. We've got voting buttons. The voting buttons are up. Please vote. Please let the record show that the minutes from the August 2nd meeting passed with the change proposed by Commissioner Carroll unanimously with Commissioner Rosler's not being here. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Restler, are there any changes in the agenda for this evening?
No changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Okay. Before we begin, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. I don't see any speaker slips, and I don't see that, oh-my-greatness look, so we will go on. Mr. Restler, before we begin, will you be giving us a little preamble of what the engineering design review process is all about and what you expect, you and the applicant, expect from the commissioners?
Sure. I'll do that as part of my presentation. I don't know if...
Yippee.
Let me have that put up. But yes, tonight we're here for an early design review of the Nassar Home Residential Project. The project number is P-16-0260. The process, the idea... Or, excuse me, EDR process provides the Planning Commission an opportunity to review proposals at an early stage and provide comment to the applicant. The proposals themselves have not been routed to any of the city departments, and the city has not done a formal review of the application or the submittal itself. The applicant will be here to answer any questions you might have in regards to the design of the project, as well as the thought processes associated with the project itself. At the end of the item, there will be no formal action or vote associated with it, since it is a discussion for tonight's meeting.
So this is basically, this is for the Planning Commissioners and the public who choose to come out and join us, to actually see what the applicant has in mind. Now, the Traffic Department, or the Zoning Department, or all the other departments, they haven't had any preview yet to the drawings that we've been given. Is that correct?
You're absolutely correct, yeah. Tonight is kind of an open forum for you guys to have an opportunity to take a look at the drawings and provide them guidance in terms of what your expectations are, if there's any issues that you might see, so that in the future, when they go before you in an entitlement process, that they have a better understanding what your expectations are.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. With that said, do you want to go ahead and give us the staff's presentation of the project?
Yes.
Thank you.
Staff has received a preliminary proposal for the development of 22 condominium units on a 1.5-acre site. The site is located on the west side of East Vista Way, just north of Old Taylor Street, and the 1.5-acre site is currently vacant land. This is an aerial of the site. Again, it's 1.5 acres. The site is actually one legal lot, and it's currently vacant. The properties to the north are developed with an apartment complex. The property to the south is developed commercially. The property to the west of the site maintains single-family residential lots, and the properties to the east across East Vista Way are developed with detached condominiums, as well as commercial development. The proposed site is... maintains a general plan, land use designation of medium-high-density residential. That land use designation allows for up to 15 dwelling units per acre. The zoning for the property is RM15 multifamily residential. The zoning allows for up to two stories and a maximum density of 15 units per acre. The proposed project would require a site development plan, condominium housing permit, tentative subdivision map, review of the project based on sequel requirements, as well as a landscape review. The project includes 22 condominium units within six separate buildings. The density is 15 dwelling units per acre. The project includes two-story walk-up units with individual garages, two-car garages, and the height, as shown on the plans, is approximately 26.25 feet. Each unit has been designed to maintain two bedrooms. Again, the 1.5-acre site would maintain six buildings with a mixture of two to four condominiums per building. The site has been designed to provide a total of 63 parking spaces, which exceeds the code requirement by eight parking spaces. The code requires for multifamily residential development, 2.5 parking spaces for two-bedroom units. The site amenities shown on the plan includes rooftop terraces, as well as passive open space area. Architecturally, the proposal provides a Mediterranean-style architecture. The condominiums, again, would be two stories and maintain Spanish tile mansard roofs. The units would maintain a stucco exterior with architectural features including arched openings, recessed windows, decorative corbel accents, balconies, windows, shutters, as well as metal accents. Each unit would maintain a decorative wood garage door facing the interior streets within The project would provide floor plans ranging from a 1,253-square-foot, two-bedroom, two-bath unit up to a 1,457-square-foot, two-bedroom, three-bath unit. Each unit would accommodate a two-car garage as well. Staff requests the Planning Commission provide comment to the applicant regarding the design of the project. The development team is here, including ownership, as well as the architect, in order to provide answers to the Planning Commission. With that, that concludes staff's report, and I am here to answer any questions you might have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Restler. As the applicant, are you prepared to make a presentation to us, or what can we expect?
I'm the architect of the project. It'll be an error.
Okay.
I've assumed that you've seen the plans and the innovations, and... Well, essentially here, one thing about the neighborhood, going all the way up Vista Way and back, is that it's got a semi-rural feel, which is a real nice thing, so... And what we want to do with the site, in terms of the housing, is that we have owners, not renters, not a renter profile. And in fact, a couple of things I wanted to point out that may have kind of escaped your view on the first go-around here is that these units would all have entry gardens, like an English garden. So in addition to the open green space on the site, every entry to every unit would have its own hedged garden area. So this fits in with the whole profile of owners living there and stakeholders in the The... As far as the looks from the street on this project, we have essentially, five of these buildings are the same plan. They are. However, they're configured in different fashions. They... When you approach this site from the street, you would see the three buildings that you see on the approach would all give a different elevation, a different viewpoint, and they're set... They're staggered and set back. So you don't get this blocky look that you would on a typical apartment complex, and I won't name any of the surrounding neighbors. We did have a pre-app meeting here, so we are... We have an awareness of the concerns that various staff members did bring to us, including water mitigation because of the position of the site. It was an agricultural land for a long period of time, and so there's a water migration issue, which we've already started to address at the front of the project for, in terms of containment, should there be a periodic event. And we believe that, you know, we're sitting quite lightly on the site. Another important aspect of this that we wanted to bring was energy conservation and an area for solar panels on each one of these roof terraces, with actually not passive for just water, for your water heater, but with inverters that would actually give power back into the unit. Now, each individual owner... Well, when you get to the point of HOA and you start actually formulating this stuff further down the road, you know, I'm sure there will be a profile there that addresses Title 24 and addresses, you know, what you can... Potentially what you can do to maximize, you know, energy use and energy conservation on the unit. So... But that's what we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. That's more detail-oriented thing. Each one of these... Each one of the four-unit buildings has a handicapped accessible unit at the end. And we actually... And we have walkways that go continuously to the front entry. And at the moment, we have one van-accessible space at the front, near the front entry of the project, very prominently located. And because of our part... The favorability of our parking count, we could get more... A little more aggressive in terms of, you know, providing the other spaces that you see distributed on the site, and maybe a little more space in terms of, you know, handicapped accessibility for those end units. So this would be a place that we... I mean, we envision it as a place where people that want to stay for the long term, perhaps seniors, you know, this would be a good place for them. And so we think it works nicely in terms of the variation of the units and how they're placed on the site.
Don't go away. We may have questions.
Okay. By "don't go away," do you mean stand here or sit there?
Whatever you like, but you may be going back and forth.
Okay, then maybe I should stand.
Commissioners, this is your opportunity to make... To ask questions to staff and the applicant regarding the project. Commissioner Carroll.
Thank you, Chairman. So there's a couple of retaining walls, site retaining walls, four- and five-foot walls that are adjacent to the sidewalks. I'm assuming there'd be some sort of fence railing on top of those. Do you have any idea what that would look like as far as the fence on top of that wall?
Something lighter, probably something wood, something that goes with the hedgework that is adjacent. The hedgework is, when we were talking about the garden entries to the units, that's mostly... That would mostly be hedgework for softness, okay, of the site, and also for, heaven forbid, you know, emergency vehicles having to not just take the lanes, but access, you know, between the units. Hedges are nice, but they can also be run over if you need emergency access. Now, as far as, again, back to the retaining walls, we have a prevailing slope on this site, so it has to be cut in certain areas. And where the retaining is located is between, in a couple of locations near the front of the site, and then between the two buildings to the southwest. Actually, we're north, I believe, as we're looking west, is left on the site plan. And on top of the structural portion that would do the actual retaining, be it concrete and/or CMU reinforced, on top of that, we would see something in the order of like wood slats and maybe some decorative ironwork, but something lighter. We wouldn't be looking at something like a block wall or anything like that.
Yeah, something transparent.
Semi-transparent. Let's say translucent, you know, for lack of a better word.
Yeah.
But something that maintains privacy, but it's not... Doesn't look like a barrier.
Okay. Just curious. Thanks.
Yeah.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
I would like to know how many parking spaces they would need if these were listed as three-bedroom condominiums. And the reason I ask that question is we have a proposal in South Vista that is designed basically the same way, with two-car garage downstairs, a bedroom downstairs, and two bedrooms upstairs, which I don't see any difference here why this wouldn't... Whatever you call it, wouldn't become a three-bedroom condominium. So what would the parking requirements be if this was a three-bedroom?
So the... For a three-bedroom unit, it'd be required to maintain three spaces, and that would include a half a space for guests.
So what would be the total impact? Right now, they're saying they're going to provide 63 parking spaces, but it says that there's only a requirement of 55. So if it was a three-bedroom times...
Then you're looking at another 11 parking spaces?
So it would be insufficient if this was called a three-bedroom.
You're absolutely correct.
But if you call it a two-bedroom with an office, it only requires 55 spaces?
You're absolutely correct.
Major concern. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney.
Thank you. Along the same lines as was just spoken, you had mentioned that you're providing accessible living accommodations.
Yes.
At the ground floor. You're going to have to modify probably that floor plan, because code doesn't allow a bedroom right off a garage, and you've got full bathrooms on every ground floor that's labeled as an office. So those spaces are going to be converted to a bedroom either after the fact, or they're going to be bootlegged in by the owner. And so I think the parking issue is one. But also, if it's an accessible unit, they can only access that ground floor. They can't access the kitchen, because that's all at the upper levels. So I think there is a concern...
Can I address that, Ms. Looney? Because... And again, we haven't gotten to the fine detail, but there is such a thing as chairlifts. And again, we haven't detailed the whole gamut of these units, but the intention is that there be office ground floors, and the intention is that on those accessible units, a lift would be provided to get to the upper levels. And that would be... And if the concern is the bootleg factor, then I... Well, on CDs, you have policing at that point when those are submitted, and the HOA agreement... And then after the fact, the HOA agreement on people that are buying into the project could formulate that and prevent the addition or the conversion of something into a bedroom, because those are, in fact, you know, intended as live-work space. This project, in its earlier iteration, was more of a industrial-looking project, the kind you see up in Los Angeles and downtown San Diego, and was intended as live-work spaces. We haven't dropped that aspect, you know, of the project. So whatever assurances or that we can provide in order to profile these and make them as two-bedrooms and keep them that way, we certainly are willing to do that. So, you know, as far as saying that these are... That we designed these in order to allow them to be bootlegged, well, I don't do projects like that, you know? And again, we welcome your input and aid in preventing from that happening. You know, we're selling something which is... Bedrooms are a sellable thing, but also we're, you know, evolving into a situation where work... Live-work spaces are also a sellable thing, if you're talking about the commerce of the thing. So I understand your concern, and I've seen various projects, you know? But, you know, we'll do what it takes to keep them as two units. And in fact, you know, in a further iteration of this project, maybe we'd even want to reduce the parking if it was deemed that more landscape would help, would help it, you know, if that were the feedback that we were going to get. But we'll do what it takes to assure that it's a two-unit. And then physically, all of these have entries, and we'd like them to have office, a workspace downstairs, so...
As you work through refining the floor plan, as I went through the floor plans and the roof plans and the exterior elevations, you've got some bedrooms, a master bedroom that's eight-and-a-half feet wide. You've got a master water closet room that's only has three-and-a-half feet in length from the back to the front. So... And you've got, in some bathrooms, there's only two feet between the edge of the counter and the back wall of the... And the wall of the shower. So it looks great initially on plan, but when you put a scale, and you've indicated that these plans are drawn at quarter-inch scale, they've got to work, because right now, after you get a two-foot, three-inch fixture, toilet fixture, in a three-and-a-half-foot-long room, it doesn't work. So just again, as you're refining these things...
Yes.
It would be good. The bedrooms are really small, and on one elevation where you have that gable that comes over a bedroom on the side, that's on sheet... On sheet E, with the roof design, you're going to end up with about a four-foot-high wall on that room. And so if you just tweak that roof a little bit, then you're going to be able to get some of those wall heights in that room. And again, going on some of the exterior elevation dimensions, you've got a 12-foot from ground floor to second-floor dimension. It really scales 10 feet, and then your window head heights need to be looked at, too. So again, as you refine your plan, just make sure that the plan works with the space allocations, because it does come back to footprint.
Well, yes. We did have some limitations that were set previously in terms of the site plan, and I've been struggling with that aspect of it, I will admit, yeah.
Question for staff. On an application like this, does the applicant fall under the city policy of amenities? Like swimming pools, barbecue areas, play areas?
The requirement actually, I think, starts at, correct me if I'm wrong, Patsey, but 25 units for one amenity?
That's correct.
Per the design guidelines?
Okay.
I'm curious what the list of those amenities are, if you have it handy. And the reason I'm asking that is that if we can provide one of those amenities, regardless of the fact of whether we have the unit number, I think that that might be a good investment, you know?
I really think it would, because right now, all the activity is limited to those English garden areas. If a young couple comes into their first home, and they have their first child, or even if they have another couple come over, sometimes it's nice to have that outdoor space in which to grill or just to converse that's beyond the walls of their own...
Ah, yeah. Well, addressing that specifically, and we've kind of battered around a few ideas, is we have a... Basically, a park area in front at the entry, and so we have two things that need to be solved, which... One of which has not been calculated yet is what the responsibility of the site will be in terms of retention, in terms of 100-year flood and such. And so we have that element in front, and then we have grass area next to it, and we are guesstimating at this point as to how much one is and the other is. But potentially, that front area now is just turf, but it certainly could use a gazebo element, barbecue elements.
It might be good to bring it more to the interior of the lot rather than on Vista Way.
Because of the public-private issue that was brought up when we had the pre-app, yeah. That's certainly a possibility, and certainly...
Lots of possibilities.
Yeah, yeah. It could be done. One thing I do like about the layout very strongly here is that we're not monotone in terms of our proximity to the street. We have quite a setback on one portion of it, and so there's that variation. So when you approach the site, it's not, you know... We don't have the apartment-building look, let's say, you know, that's right at the
Commissioner Jackal, you have questions?
Yes, please. I agree with you. I like the various setbacks from the street. Couple of questions. Are the rooftop terraces meant to be used?
Yes, they are. Yes.
I had wondered about the amenities also, and I guess I'd forgotten that it was 25. If there is some way away from the street to provide some kind of gathering place, or at least a place where, as Mr. Looney said, couples would have a place to go grill or that sort of thing, that would be really great. Are there... I really looked at the floor plans, and I apologize if I didn't see them. Are there laundry facilities?
Upper and lower, washer, dryer, I think. I think... You do have a very good point. At the end of the, on the B units, at the end of the kitchen, we have, oh, it's not identified, but we have a space for an upper and lower washer dryer unit.
What sheet is that, please?
That would be sheet B.
Okay, and that would be where?
It's next to the deck balcony in the kitchen area.
Okay.
It's not labeled. I apologize for that.
I had an upper and lower laundry myself once, so that works. Two-car garages are great. Is there any kind of parking management plan in your mind so that people don't use half their garage for storage?
For storage, yeah. That's the 20th century problem of suburban America. That, in HOA rules, you know, often those are codified and say, you know, do not use your garage as storage. You can put overhead storage within the garage, but not take up floor space. That's the only way that I know, that I'm aware of, that that sort of thing is policed within a housing project. And this would be no different in that regard. As far as when people have garage sales because they have so much in that garage, or, you know, I don't have an answer for that.
Right. Well, I'm concerned, because in a way, this whole parcel is sort of like an island compared to its surroundings. And so, if people have to go someplace else to park, which they shouldn't, I just don't know how that's going to work. So, anyway, just a thought. Okay, I have driven along East Vista Way various times of day, and most of the time, it's a steady stream of traffic. Getting in and out of this, I think, is going to be a problem. And I don't know... Mr. Ressler, can we ask that a traffic study be part of this?
At this point, I know our environmental planner hasn't reviewed it and hasn't determined what technical studies will be required. We don't even know what environmental valuation will be on the project as well. But we can take notes and express your concerns to them when that determination's been made.
If I could make a comment pertaining to that. In the pre-app meeting, I was listening to hear what traffic would have to say. And it didn't seem that we were close enough to the intersection, because I didn't, the comment that I was almost anticipating hearing about that didn't come. So, I'm not saying that it's not an issue, but it hasn't been brought up yet by your department that deals with that. So, I'm guessing that we are a good enough distance away from an intersection that it isn't an issue. And the other driveway is, that's not, you know, a driveway that's used. It would be the one driveway that would be for everyday, you know, day-to-day use.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions myself. The office workspace, can that be used as a storage room?
Well, where we were able to provide, and again, I'm looking at the unit B, which, you know, I have a file room indicated there and that's just off of the office space. And so, that is one example. Now, did we do that on the, we did that where we could, and I think... Yeah, well, the other units are not quite as big, so we don't have a file room there, which essentially would be a storage room. So, as far as that, perhaps, again, yeah, space being at a premium. You know, we could, and we haven't indicated it so far, but we do have a significant amount of storage space under the stairway on the A units. And also have space off of the garage that, again, we haven't labeled it yet. It's, you know, it's in process here. But that is not part of, you know, the main garage, but opens up onto it. And that's under the garage. That's under the stairway that leads up to the second floor.
Sure, but for those folks who just can't seem to get rid of that second bed that, you know, that little Johnny slept in, and they want to keep it, so that could be used, that room, office-workspace room could be used for storage, or for the old couch and the chair you can't part with, and the bed, and the Christmas boxes, and...
I suppose we could do that. And, you know, 360 square feet of open office space is a pretty good size. But if it were 60 to 100 square feet less, you know, that might still work. In fact, that probably would still work. Considering that most of these would be, you know, I guess it would be just, it would be one person working there. So, yeah, so we could do the file room the same as we've done on the end unit, where we have more space. Yeah, we could put a file room there.
Now, you said that the rooftop terraces had access. By whom?
Yes.
Who can use those?
The owners of the units.
Okay, so the specific units where these rooftop terraces are, they get a little extra amenity because they can enjoy the views and things like that? Is that correct?
Yes, and get some sun, and actually have a space to place solar panels as well, which we would actually, you know, in the infrastructure of the buildings, we'd already have provision for that, electrical connections and to convert, you know, to electricity.
Okay. Refer to drawing A. Drawing A is the 893-square-foot unit. So, on the ground floor, we have the parking. We've got the office, the work area. We have a bathroom. Then we go upstairs to the second bedroom, living room, dining room, kitchen, master bedroom. And there's one bathroom, which is in the master bedroom. So, if I happen to be occupying that second bedroom and I need to use the ladies' room at 2:00 in the morning, I gotta go downstairs into the...
Gosh, you know, I pictured you in the master bedroom, not the second bedroom, actually, to tell you the truth.
Thank you. But that's the case, correct?
Yes, and this layout and, gosh, yeah, you know, an additional half-bath upstairs, could we? It would be difficult. It was difficult making it a two-bedroom, actually. And...
Make the master bath, put the wall, change where the door is, and make it a access from the living area.
From both?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another thing we considered.
It's not ideal, but it works.
Okay, well, I think maybe we can make that bedroom bigger, or... Yeah, that's definitely something that, you know, I appreciate the comment, because that goes back to, you know, how appetizing this is to a potential buyer. So, I mean, that helps us. I, you know, appreciate it. And, yeah, half-bath. And then we're looking at, again, the, we're going to three bathrooms on a two-bedroom. Well, yeah, that has to be looked at. That probably needs to be reconfigured.
Okay.
So that it's access from the outside. But going to three bathrooms, you know, practically speaking, I don't think it would, the unit would work as a whole if we added an additional bathroom. So, it's access, but...
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Can you give me an idea on the elevation difference for the roof deck to the top of the roof? That, what, if you're standing on the roof deck, what that roof height looks like in relationship to where you're standing?
And it, you know, and I know we, at this point, have we provided a section? I don't think we have, but... Yeah, thank you, thank you. You know, in the order of three to four feet, some, a few places are low, but for the most part, four feet. So, it's kind of privacy-oriented. We didn't want them to be too low. Because essentially, then it becomes like a glorified parapet. We want it to be a full-roof look. And in fact, the Mazzard roof is a full roof. It's just a different style of roof. But we also wanted, you know, a reasonable amount of privacy. Because when you're up on a roof deck, it's kind of, you know, sometimes you're sunbathing. So, it's not so much about looking out all the time, which you still can do if you're, you know, instead of this railing height, if you're up at a low wall height and you still get privacy. So, that was the thinking behind.
Okay, yeah, I like the use of space. I'm just curious on the height relation. Thanks.
Okay, that's it from the commissioners right now. So, we've got some speaker slips from the public, and then we'll see what they have to say.
Okay.
So, first up is Tom Fleming, please. Please state your name and give your address, please.
Tom Fleming, Grapevine Road in Vista. A couple of things I was concerned about is, one, it sounded like the square footage of these condominiums was a pretty small square-footage unit. So, I heard 800-something at one point. That really is quite small. And when you start cutting it up and adding the little things that you were talking about with the storage under the stairwell, that workspace will probably end up being used as a bedroom or a storage area, one of the two, of the people pile their stuff in there. So, I just, you know, I'm concerned about that. The, moving it to three-bedroom, that could be used that way, the parking throws me off there. I'm concerned about the lack of parking. Possibly increase the size of the units and have fewer, and work out a deal, something like that. So, those are just a few of my comments I just wanted to share with you.
Thank you very much. Ursula Sack, please. State your name and give your address, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Ursula Sack. I am at 2392 Vista Grande Terrace in Vista. And I am representing Guajome Alliance for Responsible Development. We're also known as Guard. You've seen me before. And the really important thing I wanted to say here is that a traffic study is absolutely essential in this situation. A few months ago, when you were doing an early design review on a project a short distance south of this one, I spoke about the gridlocked traffic on East Vista Way. And one of you asked the staff whether that project met the city's circulation element. And the staff member said that it did. And I have to say, I was puzzled by that response. I was definitely scratching my head. Where East Vista Way narrows from four lanes to two lanes at Taylor Street, which is very close to this project, the traffic is seriously gridlocked during rush hours. And that intersection, which is where this project is right next to that intersection practically, at East Vista Way and Warmlands operates at a level of Service F, as do all the intersections north as you're heading all the way up to Gopher Canyon. In fact, there's a photo from Warmlands looking up toward Gopher, excuse me, Gopher Canyon, and you can see the gridlock there. Do you have those photos there that you can see?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. And so, that's what it looks like for hours every afternoon. And these pictures were taken a few years ago, so there are more cars now. There's been that development on Vista Way on the east side that has added 73 units. So, that's going to add. Then, if you can show the other photo, this is standing at the intersection. And actually, the property we're talking about is on the right-hand side, just behind that tree. But this is looking down toward Taylor Street. And again, as you can see, it is an unbroken line of cars. And you can't see it because of a little bit of a hill there, but they, those cars often go further south, past Taylor Street, and sometimes far beyond. So, if this does in fact meet the city's circulation element, something's terribly wrong here. So, we really believe, and I hope you do, too, that the city needs to correct this gridlocked traffic situation before any further development projects in that East Vista Way corridor are even accepted for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sack. That's it for the public speaker slips. Does anyone wish to speak who hasn't yet filled out? I'm guessing not. Okay. Commissioners? Oh. Come on up, state your name and give your address. And then in the back, just outside, you'll find your speaker slip and then turn it in.
Thank you so much. I'm Patricia Mankin. My address is 2112 East Vista Way, the adjacent property. And I had a couple of questions from the plans that I was able to look at earlier. One of them is where is the trash service going to be for the project? I don't know if that was noted on there, like dumpsters. And the second one was how, just as a matter of curiosity, the water heaters for the property, where they're going to be located? And third thing is what are they going to, how are they going to take care of the slope on the north side of the property? Are they going to do a block retaining wall or a top, a fence on top, or what's going to happen there?
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Nick, can you shed some light on those three items?
The first item...
Trash?
Was it, well, and we actually went back and forth. We were kind of arguing a little bit about that whole thing. And I feel that, you know, the trash enclosure says apartment, and that the arrangements will be made so that a garbage truck comes and twice a week, depending on the season, would pick up trash bins in front of the unit garages, just like they do on a city street.
Okay.
Without, you know, coming and getting that big dumpster there. That's commercial, that's apartment building. That's not what this project is. The second item...
Water heaters, where are they located?
Water heaters, we're still working on that. Elevated on a shelf, you know, in the corner of the garage is one possibility. Perhaps we'd look at an alternate thing, get them up near the roof, and perhaps have them more efficient in terms of using that solar heat to heat them. So, that's kind of, that's an aspect of plumbing design we haven't really delved into yet.
And then, thirdly, was the, I believe it would be the northwest slope?
The north property line has an existing retaining wall. And we are sloping away at about a 45-degree angle from there. And I can't say for certain. Our civil engineer is... Our civil engineer has graded it so that the existing retaining of the other site holds the other site. And we're grading down, you know, at a gradual slope here that, you know, probably will not need any substantial additional retaining.
So, it will be addressed further.
It will be, I mean, when it's found. That's a, I mean, it's a technical issue, but I, I don't see it as, as a major problem just because of the grading there and because it's already being retained, and we're not going to be displacing the substrate that's within, you know, 30 feet of the property line at that side, so...
Okay. All right. Uh, let's see, next, public comment, uh, comments from the planning commissioners, and we're changing our routine that we were using, so we're just going to have two topics. So the first one is the site plan, so grading concerns, setbacks, lighting, parking, traffic, amenities, et cetera. Who wants to go first? Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So on, on site design, um, I would just, um, offer that maybe to have the fire department look at this sooner rather than later, because I'm a little concerned about the radiuses and the access of the, of, of emergency vehicles to the interior of the site. If those radiuses were to, to grow, then I think it would affect your footprints. And then I would like to see something more active rather than just the passive turf area, but, uh, at the same time with the comment as, as far as bringing, the comment we had from a commissioner about bringing that more to the interior of the, of the site, I, on one hand, I, I like that you're able to set back that building off the street and, um, and, you know, that is the low, I, I realize that's the low point of the site, so that's the logical place for your stormwater treatment, so there will be some, something there, uh, for stormwater. But I, I actually like how, how that's set back off the street, and, um, I'm assuming the existing sewer easement needs to remain, so there's, um, you know, it's a square piece of property, there's not a lot of opportunity for, uh, you know, undulating roadway design and, and still being able to get buildings in there. I, I like that these are five small, small units as opposed to, um, say, two large units, so I think that's good. And I like the connectivity that's been provided with, with the sidewalks. And, uh, I like that there's a little extra space from the drive area back to the garage, that extra five or seven feet, I think really helps with cars backing in and out, have that five, five feet in front of the garage and then another five feet at the neighbor's, neighbor's garage to the neighbor's building. So I, I think that's, works too. Uh, that's all I have.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
Uh, three comments. One is parking. Again, a major concern about whether the parking's going to be sufficient if these are all turned into three-bedroom condominiums. Uh, number two, obviously, the traffic is, is a major concern. Even being able to turn left out of there, I mean, there's going to be an hour or two a day, you're never going to be able to turn left out of there based on, you know, personal knowledge of that, but looking at the photos. And finally, uh, the amenities. There is no school close by, there is no playground close by, so I don't know what these kids are going to do, and I don't know whether there's sidewalks all the way down from this. I don't believe there are. So I, I, that's a major concern, where, where are the kids going to play?
Thank you. All right. Next, commissioners, um, comments on the architecture, design of the project, will the project fit the surrounding area, landscape concerns, things that are seen. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sorry, I thought of something else on site design that I wanted to ask of staff, and could you, you know, everybody knows East Vista Way is, is, is trouble for traffic, but can, can you describe where that turns to county-maintained road and where a city's responsibility ends for that as far as future improvements?
The city boundary is just a little bit north of the Warmlands intersection, so, um, if you're coming southbound into Vista, you'll pass a little sign that says, "Welcome to Vista." That's the city boundary. It's just maybe a couple hundred yards north of the intersection.
Okay, as far as...
Before you get to Osborne.
Overall, in widening of East Vista Way, where does that fit in with our, with CIP projects?
So the widening of Vista Way, and I can respond to the circulation element question because that was a good question, that the answer to that question is it's consistent with the circulation element because they will do the widening in front of their project, frontage at the time that their project is developed, so their frontage is consistent with the circulation element. However, East Vista Way is obviously not built out to the city boundary, so we do not have East Vista Way in our CIP over the next five-year plan. We've been focusing most of our funding on Paseo Santa Fe and downtown, and until we get to Phase Three of that, which we're in the last phase of funding right now, after that, I believe the council will be talking about priorities, and I'm guessing this one will be one of their top ones. There is some widening that's going on right now as a result of some of the private developments, so Shea, this project, the Chow's, uh, construction that's underway will do some widening. So we're waiting for all those pieces to finish up and then we'll come in and finish it. My guess is it's within the five-to-10-year horizon right now.
Okay, thank you. And so, so that's, leads to my comment about East Vista Way is that as these projects fill in and they, and they will all fill in eventually on East Vista Way, uh, that's, uh, you know, these developers are, are making these widening road improvements. So, um, I know it's, it adds traffic, but it, it also helps accomplish some of the widening.
Commissioner Jackal, please.
Thank you. On the whole, I like the sort of overall concept of the project, and I like the, the architecture for the most part. But the, the parking, the lack of amenity, play space for kids, um, all the, all the things that have been brought up, it might not be a bad idea to consider, as one of our speakers suggested, to reduce the density, take out one of the units or more in order to provide space for these things, but...
Commissioner Looney, please.
Thank you. On the architecture, just a couple of things. I think there are some space allocation issues in the floor plan that need, um, serious consideration. You, some essential spaces that are not shown in the floor plans and some circulation within the unit, particularly having to go downstairs to a bedroom when the bedroom is at the main level, and then the room sizes, I think, need to be evaluated. On the exterior, I think it would be good to look at a particular theme, because right now we've got elements of craftsmen, we have elements of French, and we have elements of Spanish in one structure. Pick one that develops a stronger theme, uh, and that would really help the aesthetics. So that's, that's what I have for the architecture. Thank you.
Um, excuse me, my, my only additional comment is in the, the traffic, and I, the only way that I can see it now, the way the traffic situation is, is to exit the property would have to be right turn only, have to go to the next signal and you turn it if you were going north, but other than that, um, there are things about the project that I like. I like the sidewalks, I like the little, the, the small hedges around. I think there's some very nice things, but there's some room for some changes, and, and I think the commissioners and the speakers have identified those, so with that, sure? Come on up.
Say something about the traffic issue, and, uh, those photos were pretty striking. I haven't been here during rush hour. The, and I'm going to call it the alleged third bedroom, uh, from Mr. Garretson and Mr. Looney. You know, that, these are live workspaces. That space can be more solidly defined by reconfiguring and, and adding storage space as a live workspace. The thing about live workspaces is a lot of people do not have that daily commute, although it seems like a lot of people in Vista still do. But moving forward, a lot of people do work at home, whether on the net or, or, and this is, this is one of the themes of the project, to encourage that and to provide amenity for that. As far as the third bedroom ghost issue, you know, and raising its head, we could, in addition to, um, you know, formulating this for people that purchase, purchase it, we could physically, uh, make, make the office more of an office by providing, again, storage space that's more clearly, uh, built, you know, within that space so that it, that it is, that, so that they are offices and workspaces moving forward. Anyway, as far as the traffic is concerned, you know, this is not intended to add significantly to the traffic because the understanding that some of these people will be working at home, so I just wanted to mention that.
Commissioner Carroll?
I wanted just to mention to the applicant that if you were to add more parking, another four spaces minimum, then that, uh, third bedroom issue would, may disappear because you would be meeting parking requirements for a third bedroom, so you may not get, you may not have that, uh, speed bump in your way if, if you were able to add a little more parking, just a suggestion.
Okay, um, so to the applicant and to Mr. Wrestler, did we provide you the information that you were looking for this evening?
Yeah, did you provide a, like, direction to the applicant, I think they understand the direction you take before they're going to do that?
Okay, perfect. Then we are done with item one. Okay.
I'm sorry, can I make another comment?
Sure, yeah.
Pertaining to the, pertaining to the parking count that you mentioned, if anything on this, we, we're over on parking and we're, are considering, actively considering and discussing reducing the parking spaces in order to add landscaping. This is, uh, this is our preference, or actually most strongly my preference, but we're discussing it. So the, the issue of that potential third bedroom, we want to mitigate that. This works as a project from a client's point of view, commercially, as a real estate deal, as two bedrooms with a workspace. It, it does work, and, and our inclination would be to keep it at two and lock it in at two, in fact, so, well, anyway, that's, I, I just wanted to clarify intentions here as far as that's concerned.
Okay, thank you. Did you fill out the speaker slip? Okay, perfect. All right. Now we're on to commission, staff discussion, council action, and reports. Mr. Conley or Ms. Chow, who's going to handle that?
Sorry. Uh, I don't have a lot to, um, report tonight, other than we are going to have a planning commission meeting on September 6th. Uh, we'll have a couple of items. The Creekside Apartments over by Fraser Farms will be one, and we're going to update our adult daycare regulations, we'll be bringing that for recommendation. Uh, we will also have a meeting on September 20th, which looks like it will be the Breeze Hill Apartments, so that should be a lengthy meeting. Um, and we have a couple of items queued up for October and November, so everybody's back in school, and I think we're going to have some regular meetings for at least the next few months to try to knock out stuff that's getting through our process.
Any new leases in town, or?
Um, nothing really to report on. We are still working with EDR. There's been a lot of concerns about vacancies within the center and increasing rents. This project that's coming before you is also a party to the center and has been working with them on some of the issues out there, and I know they'll discuss that when it comes before you, uh, but really no news on that front, still working with brokers.
The Creekside, the Fraser, they, they, they were one of the first ones that went through the EDR process, is that correct?
They went through EDR in, I think, maybe the end of last year, beginning of this year, roughly.
Thought I remembered that one. Okay. All right, thank you. Comments from, John just did that, Mr. Stone, City Attorney, nothing, thank you. Reports, comments from the commission members? Commissioner Carroll?
That's a leftover, sorry.
Oh, that's a leftover. Seeing none, we are adjourned, 7:06.